And.
Recording in progress.
I, I, I've learned to wait for the magical words. So we certainly want to welcome everyone to our afternoon session of our city council meeting. And before we call the meeting to order, as usual, under the, the new, the new normal, whatever that's going to be going forward, we're going to explain to people how they can participate, participate in this meeting. So I'll turn it over to our congenial city clerk who can explain to folks how to participate.
Yes. Good afternoon. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city is currently holding public meetings by teleconference. There are two ways to virtually participate. You may join the meeting using Zoom on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. To call in by telephone, dial toll free eight three three five six eight 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 six four and enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you could virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call in each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that will be established for today's meeting, which we will show on a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with approximately 10 seconds delay and on Comcast channel 25 up to 90 seconds delay. And we look forward to receiving your public comments.
Good. Done as usual, quite well. And I think by now people are pretty used to getting an attending to our various meetings. So it's very good. With that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please join me in the pledge of allegiance. And again, our congenial city clerk will get put a flag on our screen for us. Thank you. And I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. United States. The United States of America. To the republic which stands.
One nation.
One nation. Individual. Indivisible. With liberty, justice, for all.
Okay, so one more thing, please, Clementine, please introduce your caring city council to anyone who might be watching or who may watch this later on various media.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
I am here as well. So the first item is public comments. And this allows the public to speak a maximum of three minutes on any subject within this jurisdiction of the city council and not on the agenda. If you have some thoughts that you'd like to share about our agenda, please wait, and that looks like it's going to be pretty much this afternoon. However, this is a good time for you. If you want to speak about our one closed session item, this would be a good opportunity for you to share as well any thoughts that you want us to know about before we go into a closed session. So with that, a gentle reminder, if you speak this afternoon, there's another public comment in the evening, but you only get to do one time. So we'll again turn it over to our city clerk. And do we have anyone who'd like to share some thoughts this afternoon?
Yes, we have one person who called in by telephone with the last three digits nine zero two. So I will allow that person to speak. Please unmute and go ahead.
Thank you. This is Nina Beatty. First of all, I wanted to address what, clarify what last, one of the last meetings that was on the HUD block grants. I asked a question about the HUD grants and addressed homeless needs. Councilmember Smith clarified really well the critical nature of what the proposal was to do, which was to reinstate the various essential Mr. Fix-It program. Keeping homeowners in their homes is really important. Many are barely hanging on, and that did not come out in the discussion, in the council discussion. Their home value has nothing to do with, with what their situation may be. If it's not cash that they can use, it's useless. They may just have social security, and if their spouses died and they have medical expenses piling up, they may already have debt and struggling to pay for food, for utilities and other bills. And then the heater fails or window breaks or the plumbing breaks or there's a mold outbreak or the roof leaks or they have some other critical need and they don't have the funds to pay for it. That's why this program has to be given in its full funding form. And I was so thankful for what council member Smith said. They could risk their home becoming uninhabitable, leading to extreme health problems, and they could even become homeless. So I was appalled by council member Hoffa's remarks, which were heartless and not based in reality. The council discussion went completely off the rails, and I hope that the, the council will put the maximum funds they can into the Mr. Fix-It program. Secondly, I wanted to talk about the priorities and drivers at the last meeting. There was a, a, one item on digitization and online storage of documents and forms from the community development department. And I wondered, is Monterey doing the same thing as Carmel? Carmel is digitizing its complete property files, including building blueprint plans and making them public. And the community development department includes the planning department. And this project started in Monterey in 2020, and if so, is it online already? Carmel is creating a security nightmare. Blueprints expose all the points of entry into a building, including doors and windows, the vulnerabilities where the bedrooms are, where the children's bedrooms are, you know, fences, gates, obstacles. This exposure affects everyone, property owners, homeowners, renters and businesses. Thieves and stalkers wouldn't have to physically survey a neighborhood. They can access entire property files from the Carmel's website and are very concerned that this could happen in Monterey. Plus the GIS aerial photos with flights overoccurring. I don't consent to this. This is privacy invasion and surveillance to snoop over people's property over their walls and behind their fences. And with these photos online, you render Monterey neighborhoods and business districts less secure. Barring invitation from a resident or property owner, this really should be considered trespassing. It's unconstitutional, it's unlawful. And when people can survey neighborhoods from the air online, they don't even have to go to the neighborhood. You just create and increase the problem that, that neighborhoods and business districts have for theft. So if this is what Monterey is in process of doing, I hope the council will stop this immediately because this is a big, they're legal questions, and there's also just the protection and security of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay. Again, thank you, Nina. We appreciate that. I did read about that and Carmel as well about digitizing things. In fact, if anyone wants to Google their address, they can find photos of their home right there on Google anytime you want to and which car you're driving, et cetera. I don't know if they block out license plates or not, but it is a different world we live in. Public appearance, there's one item, and that's to appoint agency labor negotiators. And with that, I'll turn it right over to our conscientious city manager, Hans Suslar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, an item to basically just ensure that we have the right people appointed, which allow, which will allow us to negotiate with our seven bargaining units. We, we had expected actually that, that we would have a proposal from one bargaining unit in our hands, and that would have necessitated the subsequent closed session. We don't see a reason right now to, to use that closed session because we have not received the proposal as we actually had expected to get it in our hands by, by early this afternoon. So we would have presented to you that proposal. We don't have that received. So this action basically just sets everything up in motion that will allow us to go into negotiations with our seven bargaining units. And I, just for insurance, I punted over to our HR director, Allison, how to ensure that, that I said everything correct and I didn't miss a beat here.
Yes, I have nothing to clarify. I'm, I'm here also with Gina Russo, who will also be sitting with me at the table, Deputy HR Manager. So we will be starting negotiations with our seven bargaining units. We'll also have some of our finance director, assistant finance director at the table from time to time and any subject matter experts from our other departments. But Jean and I will be leading the negotiations for the city on behalf of the city council with your approval.
Yes, okay. Thanks. So let's get back to the action item. And are there any questions? We ready to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, so I can, assuming this passes, then at that point, we would not adjourn to closed session, but I will adjourn to this evening. Correct?
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Roberson.
And that's a yes for me as well. And I think in my 40 years in city government, that may be the shortest afternoon session we've ever had. I'll have to look it up. So we'll, we'll take a recess and see everybody back at seven o'clock. And let's see if our evening session goes as quickly. How about that? We'll see you all later.
Enjoy dinner, everybody.
And
Recording in progress.
We want to give a warm welcome to everyone who's joining us for our second part of our meeting this evening. And as always, before we call it to order, I'm going to ask our congenial city clerk to read the directions and how you may participate. You can also see this anytime you look at the agenda, all these instructions are there as well. And experience shows that people are really getting quite adept at joining meetings of all kinds. So with that, go ahead Clementine and make the announcements please.
Yes, there are two ways you can virtually participate in today's meeting. You can join using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting using Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. To call in by telephone, dial toll free 833-568-8864 and enter meeting ID 1607729333 pound and if prompted to enter participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using Zoom, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. If you called in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. We'll call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised and please stay within the time limit that is established for today's meeting, which will show using a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast channel 25 up to 90 seconds delay. We look forward to receiving your public comment.
Thank you for that. And then I'll call our meeting to order, then ask that you do one more thing. that you do one more thing for us. Please introduce our caring city council.
You bet. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
And I'm here as well, and we're all delighted to that you've joined us and all of us together are dedicated to making Monterey a special place to live, work, and visit. So now that you know us all, not that you didn't before, let's go ahead right into our public hearing. There are no announcements from closed session because we did not have one. And our public hearing is the fourth hearing on the transition from at-large elections to by-district elections for city council members. This is actually where we get totally formal. The rest has been discussion, advisory, direction. But this ordinance actually will establish the districts as well as the sequencing. So it's been a long journey. And before we even begin, many thanks to our really competent staff, our partners, Liz, I saw you earlier, redistricting partners. You've helped us through this labyrinth as well. So we're at a point where I think we're going to finally make a decision. We thank all of the interest that we've had out in the public as well. And so with that, I will turn it over to our conscientious city manager, whom I'm sure is going to introduce our cooperative assistant city manager, who's been the lead on this, to kick it to you, Hans.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. He is also competent. And I, tonight is basically the culmination of a lot of work that started sometime in October and December. We had the first public meeting early December and tonight you will basically adopt an ordinance and establish that ordinance and have the first reading of this ordinance. What you see in front of you and what we have published on Friday is the representation of your last intent. When you selected a map and when you selected also the sequencing for those for the upcoming 2022 elections and which districts you are, you have selected. I will give it now over, hand it over to to our assistant city manager, Nat Roshanasatira. And he will again introduce to you what we have done and also what you have advised us going forward. And then, of course, you, the council, can ask question and open it up to the public. Then ultimately, hopefully soon, we will have the clear direction and then we will have a second reading of the ordinance two weeks later. So with that, I hand it over to Nat.
Thank you very much, Hans. And as our city manager mentioned, this will be the fourth public hearing on district-based elections. And we'll try to keep this brief since we've referred and spent quite a bit of time going through the process. The bottom line for today and our staff recommendation is for the city council to introduce the ordinance and adopt the what we know is the Dolphin map, which is now the city council member district map. And then also sequence council members districts one and two for 2022 and districts three and four in 2024. And the reason we renumbered this is as part of the transition from these draft maps to final maps, districts are now numbered. So what we referred to in the past is District A is now District One. District D is District Two. District B is District Three and District C is now District Four. And we'll share with you the maps again, just so that everyone is on the same page. So the goals for today is to review the timeline again, go through very briefly the districting principles, talk about public engagement, offer a little bit of a recap on what the Dolphin map looks like, the sequence of elections council decided on a few weeks ago. And then also take any questions and answers from council and public on maps and sequencing. So another quick recap on the timeline. The first public hearing was held back in December 7th, 2021. And we also held a community meeting on how to give feedback on December 9th. The second public hearing was held on December 21st. This was a pre-map hearing where we received input on boundaries and communities of interest. On December 28th, draft maps were released. There were four draft maps. They were named Avaloni, Batrate, Goldfish, and Dolphin. And then on January 4th, there was a public meeting to review those draft maps and discuss sequencing. And then a very important meeting was roughly two weeks ago on January 18th, the third public hearing. Council decided to introduce the ordinance with the Dolphin map and then sequence districts A and D for 2022 and districts D and C for 2024. And today we have before you the fourth public hearing. This is the final map. And we'll be introducing the ordinance as recommended on January 18th. And as Hans mentioned, two weeks from today, we'll have the fifth public hearing where the final map will be adopted. So a quick recap on traditional districting principles. So these are the criteria that have been used nationally and also upheld in courts. Each district should be relatively equal in size. That means people, not citizens or voters. They should be, it must be contiguous, so districts shouldn't hop or jump. They should be compact, both in appearance and function. Communities of interest should be maintained and they also should follow city, county, local government lines. So starting in 2020, cities and counties going through redistricting must follow the California Fair Maps Act. And that also means not using incumbent or candidate's residence as a community of interest. So the demographers shouldn't know and don't know where current council members reside. And that wasn't part of the decision-making process in selecting the Dolphin map. And also not drawing districts to advantage a specific political party. So here's a list of some of the activities the city's done to engage members of the public. That includes having information available in both English and Spanish. Back in December, we launched the, actually November, launched the Have Your Say Monterey website with the districting information. Social media, email blasts, Hans's mornings with the manager that's held live on YouTube. Media outreach, press releases. There were two postcard mailers mailed to every household in the city. We offered a map making station at the Monterey Public Library. There was an engagement community meeting held virtually on Zoom. There were print advertisements also published in the Monterey County Herald, the Monterey County Weekly, as well as also the Spanish language newspaper. And then all in all, there were 27 maps submitted by members of the public, 12 communities of interest forums submitted, and over 65 emails and letters received. And all of the public comment is available online at haveryoursaymonterey.org. And then as part of the draft map review process, so this is the effort that we council went through two weeks ago on January 18th. Council reviewed four draft maps that were created by the city's demographer, and we have Liz here from Redistricting Partners. And as we mentioned earlier, the districts must be relatively equal in population, no greater than 10% deviation. Census blocks shouldn't be split and neighborhoods and communities of interest are kept as intact as much as possible. And as we shared earlier.
Excuse me?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Mayor, I've gotten a text from a citizen that says on AMP, it still shows the meeting is in recess. Could we confirm that it is being broadcast on AMP?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Okay, I just wanted to, maybe somebody's having a technical issue at their home. Just wanted to verify that we were going out to the public on the live stream ramp. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Smith, and thank you, Malik, for verifying that we are live on access Monterey news. And, and so some neighborhood splits, as we explained last time, are unavoidable due to population and census blocks. And then council majority voted for the Dolphin map on January 18th. That was the third public hearing. So here's a look at what the final map looks like. This is the Dolphin map. And our wonderful GIS coordinator Ursula Quick Kelly put together this map that that has street level detail. So most streets in Monterey are shown in this map so that folks can easily see where they reside and which district they would be located in. And as you can see, the map, the districts have been renumbered. So District One, which you see in the upper left, includes New Monterey and the majority of Old Town. District Two includes the majority of downtown, the lower part of Monterey Vista, as well as the La Mesa Navy Housing Area, Agua Giro Oaks, Glenwood, Alta Mesa, Fish Flats, for example, and then extends east to Ryan Ranch. District Three includes the upper portion of the Presidio of Monterey, Monterey Vista, as well as the portions of Monterey Vista over there and Skyline Ridge. And then District Four includes Oak Grove, Kona, Villa Del Monte, Laguna Grande, neighborhoods, as well as Del Monte Beach. That's that map. And then as we look at the Dolphin map, we wanted to let you all know that it keeps neighborhood splits minimal. It also maximizes voting rights because it creates a district. So that's District C, also known as District, District Four now, that has the highest percentage of Hispanic, Latino, Latinx voters and citizens. So as we, the whole reason we're going through this district-based elections process is looking at the protected classes and Hispanic Latino population is the largest protected class in the city of Monterey. And it would create a district that has a 16.9% citizen voting age population, also known as CIBA. And then a 29.8% Latino population based on the census. It would also create the most diverse district when you add up all of the protected classes together. And then it also would, we've identified or through this whole process, renters as a community of interest. And while it would not create or include a map with the largest district, because Avaloni's District C has 80% in terms of rental units, the Dolphin map does have more than any other map, more supermajority renter districts. So it's the only map with the 65% or greater percentage of renter occupied units in three out of the four districts. District A has almost exactly two-thirds of renter occupied units. District C within this map, also known as District Four, is 75.7. And then District D, which is now District Two, 65.8% are renters, or at least renter occupied units. So let's take a look at the sequence of elections. Council chose to sequence districts one and two for November 2022, districts three and four for November 2024. And as council selected, councils given special consideration to the purposes of the California Voting Rights Act of 2001. And that means protecting the ability of a protected class to elect candidates of its choice. And then sequencing District Four also coincides with the presidential elections starting in 2024. And that would maximize voting rights for Latinx voters, increasing the likelihood for them to elect a candidate of their choice. And then based on that is because we reviewed and the next slide we'll share, the Latinx voters have a higher rate of voter turnout among, during the presidential elections when compared to the overall population. And we can see the data here that shows the difference between the midterm election and presidential elections compared to overall. Latinx voters have higher rates of voter turnout when compared to midterm elections. So tonight's recommendation in a nutshell is again to adopt the Dolphin map and then sequence council members districts one and two in 2022, and then three and four in 2024. And with that, and Liz is here to answer any questions as well. If you have any questions, that concludes our presentation.
All right, Nat, thank you. Very comprehensive. Questions, please. Councilmember Albert, questions?
Thank you. Nat, thank you for the fourth explanation of the districting. But my question is, when it comes to action, is it two separate actions, the map and the sequencing? Or is it all together as a ordinance? It seems like I can't figure out why there would be a sequencing because that would be done in 2024. Why that would be in the ordinance? Because it's pretty much done after 2024.
It's all, it's all in the ordinance. So it's a one fell swoop to introduce the ordinance. Perhaps our city attorney would like to chime in as well. And then it does sequence and schedule it so that districts one and two go into 2022 and then three and four in 24. That's built into the ordinance and then would be part of the city.
That's fine. It's just, it's one action and it's not two actions.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That's right.
Although, that's just my, that's my only question.
Yeah. And although that question, although the council obviously can take them separately and then put them in a final ordinance as well, the districting and then the sequencing doesn't preclude separate discussions that I would think.
The only reason I bring that up is that, like I mentioned, after 2024, there's no reason to have it in the ordinance because it's done. So it doesn't make any sense for me, or it doesn't make any sense to be in the ordinance if it's, you know.
Okay.
Just, that's just my thought.
I get it. Other questions before we get some public input? Okay, then why don't we go to the public? And we'll find out who'd like to share with us and we'll bring it back to the council afterwards for responses. And we've discussed this pretty elaborately. We had a really, I thought, outstanding, dynamic meeting the last time. So we'll see where we go. So let's ask again our city clerk if we have folks who'd like to share with us. This is their opportunity.
We do have two, and I had one thought on the sequencing and the ordinance. It will continue to be relevant because every four years, each, each seat will still need to be notated which election it will fall on. We have someone with the hand raised by the name of Kathy. Kathy, please go ahead.
Thank you. My, I guess my question for the board would be, has LULAC seen this and approved that? I guess what my concern is the, the district that you're including is not allowed to vote for two years on a representation from that area. And that concerns me because I thought that was the point of why we were going through this whole process. And I'm not sure how that gets amended. The last city council meeting that you guys had, I personally thought it was uncomfortable. I'm not sure how that, that one district seat moved to 2024, how that decision was made. I understand the presidential statistics, but that still leaves this one area without any representation at all. And that concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Our next speaker is Jean Rash.
Thank you. I have a few concerns. This is probably an exercise in futility. I, I personally, Jean Rash from Monterey neighborhood, don't understand how Dolphin was chosen. Monterey Vista neighborhood is divided in half. That area, which I don't know what you're calling it now, but the, what used to be D, which I think is two, it's not compact, it's not contiguous, it's not, not a community of interest. It goes from Villa Parizo Park to Ryan Ranch to the ocean. And I still, I've attended all but one meeting. I still don't understand it. The strongest argument was that it had a higher percentage of Latinx folks. And then to turn around and have a sequencing pattern that doesn't honor those Latinx folks and allow them to have the first sequence doesn't pass my sniff test. And I, I feel badly for that area. And I also feel badly that there will be two in my neighborhood. There'll be councilmember Hoffa and councilmember. There'll be Councilmember Hoffa and Councilmember Dan Albert and the mayor. And the whole purpose was to increase the fairness. And then Laguna Grande, who said they wanted to go first, they didn't want to wait for an election year. Their president of their neighborhood association spoke out to go first. And I, it just doesn't pass the optics test. I thought Councilmember Hoffa had a good point that we're in a perfect world. We would have a separate committee for this apart from the council people who are so personally affected by it. Those are my comments. I, I'm not, I'm not sure that this is a good decision that reflects well. And I, and I joined the first speaker. Why, if LULAC initiated this whole adventure, let's call it, why are they so quiet on the issue of the most unfranchised area not voting for two years? This doesn't make sense. I'm surprised that we haven't heard from them. Or I read in the, in the agenda that first they thought Laguna Grande, that, that area, whatever number we're calling it now, should go first. And then they said, no, they're going to retract that so all the rest of the elections aren't disrupted. And then it changed again, and I'm real uncomfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Next, we have Robert Yoha.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Robert.
I support Plan Dolphin because it keeps the North Fremont Street, Del Monte Boulevard community of interest and neighborhoods intact. And I also support your election sequence. And this is the reason why, and perhaps maybe this is why LULAC has withdrawn their concerns. Our area has never had a city council member. To ask us to go out through our community and try to find someone who can invest the time to be a city council member and have them run for office in less than six months is unreasonable. To give us sufficient time to canvass the community and find someone who wants to invest the time is going to take more than six months. It would probably take a year or two, at least a year. And so I do plead with you, please give our neighborhood sufficient time to find a candidate, find someone who would like to volunteer, and maybe two or three, so we can have a choice. To do it in less than six months is unreasonable. And I appreciate the time that you've invested in this. There have been a lot of people that have done this. They've all been paid to do this 40 hours a week. And us citizens have, you know, stood by the sidelines and commented. It's now up to us to try to get together, get our neighborhood associations together, and find a candidate to run for office. I support your election sequencing because of this basis. We have to engage everyone. If we have less than six months, people will be left out because most of everyone in our district works. They work and they don't have time to do this. So give us time to find a good candidate. I appreciate the effort that you've put into this. I think it's going to work if we give it time. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
And next, I believe this is Mike Brassfield.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mike.
I would first of all like to applaud Robert Dialogue. Certainly I can say I agree with it. The other part of it is, I think that people are getting wrapped around the axle of, to mix my metaphors, we're watching sausage being made, and not everybody is always happy with what they see going in it. And I always thought that the fact that the Hispanics in this area would gain an advantage of having the extra time, the extra two years to work on the presidential election in 24 versus 22. And for many of the reasons Robert just suggested, Fremont and Del Monte are the two joiners for this end of the city. I still hear people refer to this end of the city as Seaside, and that's people that live in Monterey. So I think that we need to have the adjoining to establish the political reality of maybe this part of the city of Monterey. And only Del Monte and Fremont do that to us. I will suggest you, it's also a greater social economic issue that this is more of a very similar price range of houses versus up on the hill or up on the extra outskirts of the city. For that reason, I also suggest that the plan that you guys came up with last meeting, we should go forward on, and with this minor change of the time period. Thank you and good night.
Thanks, Mike. I'll take a look what's in my sausage next time.
And next, we have Esther Malkin.
Good evening. I would like to point out the irony that is taking place in this whole process, that none of you and nobody who has spoken is actually Hispanic, just me. For the record, I also want to point out what Kathy pointed out and what Jean pointed out, that it's ironic that the excuse being used to make this happen is to make it equitable for everybody to have representation. Yet the one district that has not had any representation ever has to wait two years to get someone on the council, allowing the council to continue on the path that it has been on, unaffected by anybody else in districts that are not where these council members are now. They're completely uninterested in what input they get. I will tell you that there, to speak to this Robert person who spoke before, there has already been somebody tapped by Rick Hoyer and these guys that have started this process in my neighborhood to run. So there, it is not a question of finding somebody fast or not. They already have somebody. They started this process long before LULAC got involved. And this is essentially an easy way for them to control more of our city hall. Rick Hoyer is at the head of the NCIP, a lot of control involved there. They have a candidate. The excuse being used that we need more time to find candidates, maybe Kona does. What makes you guys think that I don't have a candidate in my neighborhood? But what I do have is a working class neighborhood that every single one of the neighbors that I have spoken to in my neighborhood and in Villa Del Monte have been absolutely shocked and appalled. Because while they've been working, essentially their vote has been taken and postponed. And when I tell them that in November, they are only going to be able to vote for mayor, they truly do not believe what I'm telling them. They are so shocked, they can't believe it. Now, yes, there's been low turnout, but the people, the working class people don't have time to put in the hours that I have on these meetings. And that's why you haven't heard from a lot of them. And even I have a hard time comprehending all the ins and outs and details of this. So I guarantee you that my neighbors, who are the ones paying the price, would not either. And that's a problem. Thank you.
And next, we have Richard Rucello.
Thank you, Esther.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Richard Rucello, I guess I'm speaking as the second Hispanic to speak tonight because I am half Hispanic. I want to congratulate you on the vote in the last meeting. I concur with everything that was passed, the sequencing and the map. And I don't know where the last speaker is getting their information, but I'm getting the opposite information from people that I know on this side of town. And I believe that the presidential election, the high voter turnout, will give us the best result. This is a very forced, fast process that's had, in a community of 30,000 people, a very low amount of people that have interacted with you. I doubt if we're over 50 or 60 out of 30,000. But you've had a good process, you've had a lot of discussion on it, and I think it's the best outcome. And I have to agree with you entirely and the previous speakers. I urge you to adopt what you adopted at the last meeting and move forward. And I see that this is going to benefit the city at large the best. And I appreciate the time to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Mayor Robertson, there are no further hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. Then I'll close that section of the public hearing, bring it back to the council. And we're not going to throw any motions on the table right away, right? I want to see some smiles. All right, folks, we've had the staff recommendation and let's share some thoughts. Who'd like to share some thoughts with us or start our discussion?
So Mayor, I think we can answer one of the questions that was raised with respect to LULAC.
Yes.
And their position, I think that was brought up by two or three different public commenters. So if Nat, who communicated with Andrew Sandoval quite a few times, can give us a brief summary of that, I think that would answer some of the questions raised a moment ago.
Yes. So Mr. Sandoval has been in touch with staff through this process. And the email correspondence, he was able to clarify today. His emails that weren't on LULAC letterhead were him speaking individually, not representing LULAC. And he also made it very clear that the LULAC board has not submitted a formal position on either the maps or the sequencing. So again, no, no formal position, one way or another, on from LULAC.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. I think one of the commenters, I think it was our friend Jean, was talking about this whole process making her uncomfortable. But I think, I can't speak for the council, but I think it's, for me, it's been very uncomfortable too. In that from the beginning, we've spoken that does the city of Monterey really need to go districts? Because if you think about it, from a renter's viewpoint, with 65% of the voting population, they could have elected all five council members at any time, in essence. But that didn't happen for a variety of reasons, so. And it's true historically that a lot of people have come from one neighborhood. And that's always kind of interested me, and I never really have figured it out exactly why that is. It's also an interesting fact that there have been a lot of educators on the council over the last 40 years. Lots of teachers, administrators, professors, et cetera, predominant government workers. And so that's another interesting phenomenon. And I think the fact that we went through this process because of the potential of millions of dollars of lawyer fees, that was our prime motivator. And that makes me hugely uncomfortable too. I wish we'd had the time to really dig into this and not be under a timetable. I know there's a cottage industry out there. LULAC isn't part of that. But there's a cottage industry of certain lawyers just go from town to town, wave the California Voting Rights Act in front of councils and say, give me 10,000 bucks, get busy, then I'll go away. So I share the discomfort, frankly. But sometimes you have to do what you have to do. I guess it gets back to Mike Brassfield's making sausage. I'll pass on making sausage, but that's, that's where we are. Okay, so where do you want to go? Councilmember Dan, please?
Thank you, Clyde. I also have to compliment the staff. As a former staff member, when boards have asked me to put something together in a quick fashion, it puts a lot of stress on the staff, obviously. And to do that, even though we did have a consultant, to do that all together, that's just amazing that you folks could do it within 90 days. So my hat's off to you folks. You guys did a great job. I just want to speak about the sequencing. As I mentioned before, for me, it's a difficult, it's a difficult answer, or it's a difficult question to answer because everybody has a good point when it comes to sequencing. But what it boils down to me is I want to assure that every council member on the council has been voted in and not appointed. And I brought that up in the last time. And I'm very nervous, well, I'm not sure about the other sequencing part because that will open up doors to appointments. And to me, I like the sequencing that's already on the table because of the fact that those two positions will be elected by the city of Monterey. So that's my only comment because I've already commented on the reasons why I liked Dolphin and prefer Dolphin. So that's it for me, Clyde.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Allen, please?
You're muted, Alan. Still, can't hear you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. So thank you, Mayor Clyde. It's interesting listening to the public. I think the diverse points of view there have not really changed from last time. There's some folks who kind of lean one way and other folks who go the other way. And I didn't really hear anything changing, and there weren't any really new viewpoints or voices. It is unfortunate, as Richard Rucello and as Esther said, that so few people really, I think, knew what was going on or how consequential this is for the city. And it's unfortunate we had so little time, you know, to do this. So in the end, it's an imperfect, it's an imperfect process. But I do believe we've all done the best that we can in the time that we've had. For me also, my view has not really changed from last time in terms of the maps. The major problem I have with the map that the majority selected last time has to do with District Two. And I think Jean Rash pretty much expressed my concern, which is that you have a community of interests that I think is being put into a district that really has very different interests. And so those folks in the downtown and in the lower Old Town, I don't think that is really, the rest of the district is really consistent with that community. And so for me, that is really problematic. As far as the sequencing, again, I understand both points of view. I think a valid argument can be made for doing it either way. But in the end, the fact that council largely could very well not change at all if we go forward, I don't think that was what folks wanted. I think they wanted some change, and I think they wanted it sooner than later. And I think the folks in District Four would like to have some representation sooner than later. So that's why I still lean towards the other sequencing. I do understand both points of view.
And Ellen, remind me which sequencing that you were in favor of last time?
So let's see. Last time we were talking letters, now we're talking numbers, so it's a little bit confusing for me.
Yes.
But let's see, that would be District in 2022. It would be District Four. And District Four and District One, I believe, is what I think would work.
Okay, I'm not sure. Okay, I'm not sure that's.
And then District Three and District Two in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
I'm going to have to ask, Alan, I know you probably have the maps right in front of you. I'm not quite sure the public has those maps. So Nat, do you think you could put that map up again real quickly?
Great suggestion. Thanks, Dan.
Nat, we've lost your sound. You're all garbled.
Does everyone see the map?
Yeah, we've seen the map.
Thank you, Nat. Okay, Alan, what was that again?
Hang on. So yeah, in my thinking, I believe the two districts that are most likely to you know, lead to potentially people of color and/or the rental communities being represented are certainly District Four. And you could argue about the other one. I think the thing about District Three is, you know, it may, they may say there's sixty-five percent renters there, but how many of that is the Presidio? And I really don't think that's equivalent. So I really don't think District Three is a rental represents renters, the rental community in the same way as District Four and District One. District Two obviously doesn't. I think as drawn, it's like, what was it, twenty-five or thirty percent? Can't remember from the staff report. So that's my thinking.
All right. Thank you for sharing that. And Councilmember Tyler, some thoughts would like to share with us?
Before I jump in, I'm wondering if staff could clarify. There was somebody that made a comment in regards to not having any representation in the example of what has been proposed by the majority of the council with District Four or what was District C on the previous version of the map. If they, if they're not able to have their district council seat ran this year, what does that mean for them as far as representation? I think that's kind of the thing that might be a little bit confusing for folks.
I can jump in if you want, Nat. Basically, the council members are still at large, whose terms are not up. So they will have representation through those members. So there may be several at-large members in a district to represent the district that's not up for election sequencing in twenty twenty-two.
Thanks, Chrissy. And just to say that another way, everybody and every resident in every part of the city is going to be represented after this election, regardless of where they live. Whether it's a specific district representative or whether it's an at-large elected, they will have representation on the council.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the clarification. I was just hoping to create a little bit of a dialogue on that to make sure that there was some clarity surrounding that. So I I still stand in the same position that I had from the discussion at the last council meeting. And I'm actually a little bit concerned because the arguments that are being made are now in the ordinance and I think they speak a little bit against some of the arguments or the very arguments themselves. Some of them, they're competing with each other, I guess, if I could say. So in regards to the Dolphin map, it was identifying the most diverse district, the most districts that have a high percentage of renters. I think the ordinance says above sixty-five percent. It's the only map that offered that, which that's true. But when we're naturally looking at the renter community, we know that there's not as high of a turnout of voters in that community. And so it concerns me that we're trying to water down the renter community by putting them in three districts and try to create three strong renter districts or three majority renter districts when that might not cut it in regards to them being able to be successful in elect, in in trying to get the candidate of their choice elected. And so that's why I was trying to aim us towards the Abalone map, which provided two stronger renter districts, more concentrated to increase the likelihood of their opportunity to select somebody for council representation. And and there was another argument made about the Dolphin map being the map that keeps most neighborhoods intact. And in fact, all four maps were created to keep the neighborhoods intact. So that argument, to me, doesn't really stand. I don't see where another map doesn't do as good of a job as Dolphin does. Chrissy, I see your hand up. I'll pause here.
Oh, I didn't mean to make you pause, but I was just going to state that the proposed findings in the ordinance are subject to change. So the city council tonight can say, you know, and I know you all know this, I'm just stating it maybe more for the public. So these findings can be modified to fit your policy discussion and your direction and your decision. I think from a legal perspective, findings can support the various sequencing methodologies that have been discussed tonight and previously, ones that have been included in the ordinance and ones that have not been included in the ordinance. So I think either way, this falls from a legal perspective is fine. And the findings, I think there's plenty of facts and findings to support both methods. That's what makes this so difficult and challenging and tricky. So we could modify it if that's the desire of the city council and we would adjust that. And when it comes back for a second reading, it would reflect whatever you do tonight.
Thanks, Chrissy, for the clarification. Yeah, and that's exactly why I'm bringing up these points in regards to how it's currently stated in the ordinance. I just don't think it, it, it's the right argument. I can't support going in the direction of the Dolphin map because to me, we're not, it doesn't provide that focus on the community of interest as it may be with renters. But if we are going to choose to go that direction, I'm just hoping that the council could be open to adapting some of the language in there to make it a little bit more consistent. And then just in regards to the sequencing, you know, I'll say again, when the demographer had spoke at our first meeting in January, I believe it was, I walked into that meeting thinking similar to the comment that Alan had just made regards to the need to allow the two more disadvantaged districts to be ran this year. But the argument the demographer made in that meeting was that it might be beneficial to allow those districts to be ran in a presidential cycle because it increases turnout. And again, in the staff report, we're making that argument for one district, but it's not making that argument across the board. So it's, it's, it, to me, it sounds like we're we're having competing arguments. So we're doing it one way for one district, but we're not going to do it the same way for another district. And so I'm not sure if that's an appropriate argument to be, to be used. And I would prefer us allowing the two more affluent districts to be ran this year so that we can allow the two more disadvantaged districts to be ran in twenty twenty-four. And again, all my arguments, they're all based on this idea of increasing the likelihood, right? Whatever that could be to get the renter community, the more disadvantaged communities over the edge and getting their person elected in their district. I'm trying to support that. And so that's kind of where I stand. This argument about us, you know, feeling like we have to appoint, who knows what's going to happen in the future? Who knows if we do decide to go with how the sequencing is that the majority of the council decided last time is not going to result in an appointment because maybe somebody has to, you know, who knows what's going to happen? We're sitting here making all these unknowns. And it just gives me a little bit of pause to think that we're also trying to make this about us and making an assumption about who's up for reelection and what that looks like during the election. So I don't think this should be about us. I think we should make this about, I think the argument should lie with, should we allow the wealthier districts to be ran this year or should we allow the more, the higher disadvantaged communities to be around this year? And my preference would be to allow the wealthier districts to be around this year. So we can give the other districts a greater chance in the presidential cycle in twenty twenty-four. So that's where I'm at. And the last point in regards, Alan brought this up, and I think the mayor had brought this up as well. But just in regards to the low participation, the public participation in regards to this dialogue, we are hearing from the same voices. And I think that's something normal, not just on this topic, but I think in general, we tend to hear from the same voices. And that's why I feel like we can do a better job as a city, as a council, to take leadership in, in thinking strategically about how do we want to think about including voices that aren't often heard? How do we bring more people to the table? What are those ways that we can do that? I think there is some ownership that we all can take individually. But what can we do systemically from a city's perspective in taking leadership and making sure that we're hearing from all voices? Because we're not going to be able to make the best decisions if we're not hearing from all voices and perspectives within the city. And I think there's some influence that we can have there to do a better job in this area. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyler. Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, thank you. All good information to get to hear from everybody. I don't want to rehash all of the reasons I gave last time. I still support where we're at today with the Dolphin as the selected. I want to focus a little bit more of the comments I have on the overall process and and also the sequencing. You know, I just, I'm always struck in the time that we we spend and not just the council experience, but all the other experiences that I've had that have brought me to this point and the station of my life is that, you know, we are faced with choices that hopefully we take as much of the information and the data. And we listen to a lot of people. But we all should rise above, and I think we all are, but rise above some of the personal nuances or could be perceived as a bias or prejudice. But it just, some folks, you know, look at things different. It's through their lens and I appreciate that. It doesn't mean it's right or it's wrong. It's just we have different opinions and I appreciate that. And we've heard through this process from a variety of folks and that, that's important. This has been a long process that has forced us to be fast. And I think that's where some of the uncomfortable thoughts come from is because we typically would be very contemplative and maybe we would set this aside and we could come back to this in six months or eight months, but you know, we don't have that choice. So this has been arbitrarily causing us to have to go on a fast track through the holidays. And we asked for participation and we got a lot of participation. And we had quite a bit of response for draft maps that were submitted. I lost track, but I think it was north of twenty-eight draft maps that came. Tonight, I think we heard from seven or eight folks. Last meeting, two weeks ago, we had a number of participants and all the public engagements. So we've had, you know, probably twenty-five to thirty of the same core folks that have been involved. But if you set that aside and say, well, how many voters, how many adults are there in a town of twenty-eight thousand? We've heard from very small amount of folks. And I guess that's kind of normal in the process, but we can't minimize what we've heard from all of the folks. At the end of the day, we all have a vote and we all are tasked with sorting through our own filters and getting the information that we can and leading to the point where we step up and we do leadership and we take a vote. And in part, that's our own, the five of us, our own way of sorting through the priorities that are called deciding what's in the public interest and deciding what's best for our community. And I can't deny that all, all five of us love our community and want to get everything we can right. The other thing I was going to point out was just a couple of things that support the sequencing that it's recommended, and I agree with the staff recommendation of the new district, District Four and District One being sequenced for, I'm sorry, and 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 three. So District One and District Two to be first and then District Three and District Four to be in twenty twenty-four. I want to echo a comment that was made by Chrissy, which is, well, who represents the districts that may say, well, we have to wait for a vote? I would say that no matter who is on this council, the council will still represent each and every district and the mayor is elected at large and he certainly would still recommend, would recognize and and represent the entire council. And the two council members that are currently up for reelection in twenty twenty-four would certainly still represent every single district. So I don't look at this as dividing up of this council has only got that district. At the end of the day, these districts are about seventy-five hundred folks. And we're all going to vote for not just our district, but we're going to vote for citywide interests moving forward. If I'm on the council moving forward, that's my thinking is I'm not going to be just district centric. I'm going to be looking out for my entire community. I want to go back to a key point for me in pushing this to one plan versus the other. And that's when I look at what we would consider the greatest number of renters on the east side of town and an area that has not had a representation or anyone running that's prevailed on the east side of town. I can't see that side of town sitting very well by dividing it by Fremont and taking Kona and putting it somewhere else. To me, that is the success of the Dolphin Plan. Because the east side of town, for me, it starts at Sloate Avenue going east and is all inclusive of the entire east portion of the town, which does not leave Kona out of their own neighbors. A key point that I identified in the Dolphin Plan and it connects with several of the comments that you all had, which was the renter percentages. So the renter percentage in District Two will be, under the Dolphin Plan, District Two will be sixty-five percent. Had it been in the Abalone, District D would have been thirty-seven percent and change in renters. So to me, the upside of the Dolphin Plan is to see that District Two actually has more renters that can be represented and equalizes the neighborhood. And to me, that is a fair, fair way to look at it is that as our community is, not just homeowners, but renters and folks that are going to school or working or retired are doing lots of different things. We have a cross section of our community. And it's not one or the other. It's not this or that. It is all of us together. And I think all the districts represent that. So I'm going to support the recommendation from staff. That's my thinking. I think we have it right. I can respect all the comments that are slightly different than mine. But we all have to, you know, sort through the data and the information for each one of us. And at the end of the night, we we have our vote and we respect anybody's vote here because I respect all of you.
Yep, thank you. I agree with that. Tyler, if you don't mind, before I go back to you, I need to clarify something. I've gotten the A, B, C, D, and the one, two, three, four, still trying to get that straight. Because it pertains to the minutes in our last meeting. And certainly, everybody has the ability to change their minds. So I don't have any problem with that because this is a public hearing. Last meeting was to give direction. And so at our last meeting, there was a motion. This is page forty-five in the total packet, page eight of this discussion. In that last time, a motion was introduced by Councilmember Williamson and seconded by Councilmember Hafa to select an election sequence that would place council member seats for districts B and D on the ballot. To select an election sequence that would place council member seats for districts B and D on the ballot in two thousand and twenty-two. So. My question is. B and D are what number? Nat, put the map up again with one, two, three, four, then let's put the letters so we know which ones. And again, if council members have changed their mind on that, I I understand. I have no problem with that, but. I'm trying to make sure I've got correct information from this time and last time. It's not my dog.
That's the big bear at my house.
So Nat, what would help is. The 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 motion by Councilmember Williamson and second by Councilmember Hoffa last time was basically. For. District. Now numbered three and District number four, correct?
It was my understanding it was District Two and Four.
No, two and two and three.
Two and three, so.
Two and three.
So again, District. One was A back in the day, right? I don't know why this wasn't sticking to my brain. So District Three was B. Then that would make District Four. C. I know why this confuses me, because I wouldn't have organized them that way. And then District Two was D. So the motion, again, not trying to put anybody on the spot. I'm just trying to. It it sounds like maybe we've had some change of thinking. So at the last meeting, the motion I mentioned by Councilmember Williamson and seconded by Councilmember Hoffa. Would have been. District. Two and District. Three in two thousand and twenty-two, correct? Because those are B and D.
It's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Not putting anybody on the spot. Change of thinking here.
District Four is the the Kona and via Del Monte and Oak Grove District. It was my understanding that. That was the district that Councilmembers Williamson and Hoffa wanted to sequence first. Correct, Four?
I'm looking at the minutes of.
Gotcha.
Forty-five. And so the motion, if the motion used numbers instead of letters from last time. Councilmember Williamson and Councilmember Hoffa would have. Sequenced. Three and. Two in two thousand and twenty-two. All right. And so I'm hearing.
So I wanted to, I want to clarify something. You're saying that and and they're both here agreeing that that was the motion.
No, no, I'm not. At least that, my my intention was always to see four go first.
And that's what I thought.
Yeah. That I I'm somewhat am, I'm somewhat ambivalent on what the second one that goes first should be, but I do think. I I explained why earlier, I think, one, that wasn't the motion that was made last time, but. You don't always get to, you don't always get to make the motion, or you don't always get the second emotion you necessarily would make. Try to make the best of of what you can do. But for me, my preference has always been four first, because I think that's what that community wants. And I think that is, you know, it's best to get them representation as soon as possible.
Good. Well, thank you for the clarification, because the minutes and and what you're indicating now, I I totally understand. Sometimes we second emotion and. And but it sounds like you're making it clear that you're in favor of four, and then the other one doesn't. Particularly matter to you that much. Okay. Got it. All right. So I hope that was a helpful conversation. If not, we can make it deeper, but I think we got it. All right, back to the council. Uh, Nat, put the recommendation back up, please. There were two recommendations. In the ordinance.
Grab a little bit of feedback too before we. Go too much further.
Am I giving feed?
I just wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry. You want, I thought the, I thought the computer was giving feedback. My bad. Yeah, go ahead. Sure. Thank you.
So I I just wanted to. To follow up with with Ed's comments. So I I agree with the point that regardless of the districts that. I'm hoping that all council members, all electeds will support and represent the entire city, despite the fact that they're. They're technically a representative for a a district within the city. But I think that's kind of why it's important to think about. You know, if we are trying to get representation from the renter community, I think. Richard Rissello earlier said. Something about to the effect of how people, even people that live there think that they live in Seaside, that whole perception. That stigma that's associated with that side of the community is squarely around the renter community. It's not necessarily homeowners, but I think they're looped in because there's homeowners over there. And so I think that. The specific point of the need for representation over there mainly centers around renters. And so by. Using the Dolphin Map. It waters down what would be a stronger renter district if we were to go with the Abalone map. Which takes up part of that, a big chunk of that community off of North Fremont. And so to give them a greater chance of selecting a candidate that will represent their issues. I E. renter issues, I E. this perception that, you know, people think it's part of Seaside, you know, whatever that that perception is. I think that it would be, they'd be best represented by having somebody. That that represents their issues, and I think giving them that opportunity by having. A district that has a larger percentage of renters, I think achieves that. So I just kind of wanted to to respond to that.
Okay. Mayor, I have a comment on that?
Yes, please.
As I mentioned in the last meeting, it seems like it it it's the the two boil down to renters that live. In the downtown area and renters that live in the Kona area. And to me. I I'd like to see the numbers, but it seems to me like there are probably more renters on the Kona side than there is in downtown. I I don't know. May- maybe there are, maybe they're not, but I know that there's there's a few homeowners that live down in the downtown area. So. I I'm still a little confused by those those two areas and and why one is better than the other included in. Abalone and one is not included in in Dolphin, because for me, they seem to both be rental areas.
Dan, if I could just add to that, it's not just downtown, it's also the lower parts of Old Town as well, which have a lot of renters.
How far down does that go? I I I can't remember where the map stops. Is that at Van Buren?
Well, Larkin. I think it's Larkin.
Larkin and Larkin and Van Buren then, right? It's the it's the two areas.
Yeah.
Uh, they they do have a lot of renters. You're right about that, though. Definitely.
So I comment if I might.
Sure.
Um, I think we're kind of back encircling back to sort of reinforce where I I still land. I just can't envision that we would isolate Kona. And their neighbors are across the street from Fremont. It just seems like that's contiguous and. That's one of the overall goals that we're after. And also the dilemma, as the mapographers explain to us, is it's all about the population. The voting precincts or the or the census tracts, and so it gets really complicated. But to me, the one thing that stands out, and we heard tonight and we heard last time. From many of the Kona neighbors. That basically said they wanted Dolphin because they did not want to be left out. Of their neighbors across the street on Ramona and Delavina and Casanova. And it just didn't make any sense to them, and I I concur with that. So that's why it makes sense for Dolphin. The Dolphin map to keep Kona part of the east side of town. Which, you know, if you if you believe some of the numbers, I've heard sixty-five percent of residents in Kona are renting their homes. So they do have a lot to do with the folks that are across the street from them. So I I just can't see dividing that up. I I still support the. The staff recommendation because I I just don't see any point in. Putting us in a cycle where we have. An election in November, but that council member only serves. For two years, and then you have to have an appointment. It just seems like we ought to do everything we can to have everybody that's serving. New council members or those that choose to run again. That they are elected and that we don't put ourselves in a position of having to make an appointment. Because we have a a stopgap and and it's not in alignment. It just seems like the two thousand and twenty-two. Alignment with the districts as it's on the screen with one and two in two thousand and twenty-two. Avoids that confusion and chaos. And the community elects their council members in a systematic manner. And the new district, we know, four, formerly called C, in two thousand and twenty-four. Will definitely be someone other than the council members that are sitting here today. And so that's a good thing. There'll be a new council member that represents a very diverse community with a lot of renters. That has a big land group that represents about seventy-five hundred people. And that's going to be representation. So we're not depriving anybody of representation. We're actually achieving it.
So Mayor, I think. At this point in time, I I think we're starting to repeat ourselves and still trying to convince our colleagues. But at this time, I I think it's, I I'm ready to make a motion that we adopt. The Dolphin Map and the sequencing Councilmember District One and Two in two thousand and twenty-two. And District Three and Four in two thousand and twenty-four.
Uh, Dan, would you do me a favor? Councilmember Dan, could we do those separately? I I feel, I'm I'm comfortable with. Dolphin. I haven't changed on that for the reasons given, but again, I'm I'm. Still, I don't know if the word struggling, I'm still want to have more discussion about the sequencing.
Sure. Then I I make my motion that we adopt the Dolphin now.
All right.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second. Any more final discussion on that?
I I just have to. Ed, I, you know. With all the respect, I I mean, I I appreciate your perspective, and I think we mostly understand each other. In your response just now, you had identified this argument around. Sixty-five percent of Kona having. Renter units. Sixty-five percent renter units.
Yeah, that that's what we've been told by a speaker.
Right, yep. And so that's on the the map, the heat map that the demographer had shared with us. Well, when we compare that to what that district would look like if it was in the Abalone version. That would be eighty-two percent renter district in, uh, I'm sorry. Census district in. In downtown and ninety-one percent in the lower part of Old Town. So. If that's the argument that's being made, then we should put. Our vote where our our arguments are being made. So I I just think that if if that's the argument, then. Then the Abalone map would. Do a better job of. Giving the renter community an opportunity to have have their voice be heard. And and to your point, like you were saying before. We're making this assumption that. New or electeds are going to be representing the entire city, not just our districts. So I I I'm done. I don't want to. On my side, but I just kind of wanted to respond because I think that there was a, there's a conflict in the argument that's being made.
Yeah, and and Mayor, if I I may, you're right. I mean, you're you're looking at it with a. Priorities for you, but there are layers, so there are other things that I would look at in terms of that. And as I addressed, it's. Putting neighbors across the street that are not connected to the same district. To me. The Kona just needs to be connected and and Dolphin does that, and Abalone did not. And so that that plays into it. So. It's not just one. One course or one decision based on one set of facts. There are multiple pieces, and when we look at the four districts. You know, hey, none of them are perfect. They're not. I mean. That we have to be flexible and and adjustable to to say that, you know, this is as close as we can get and achieves what the law requires. And then we get into the nuances and we're hearing from our neighbors and and we have. You know, is it forty-nine percent to fifty-one percent? Is it fifty-fifty? Is it seventy-five, twenty-five? I mean, at the end of the day, we have to make a decision where we land comfortable, and I just don't want to see Kona splintered off. I mean, that's that's the main thing. Mayor, that was all I had.
Okay. Unless there's anyone else, we'll do roll call. Roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Hoffa?
No.
Councilmember Williamson?
No.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. All right, so that part of the ordinance will be adopted then. Let's go back to. There we go. Thank you, Nat. You read my mind. It's a very short read, I assure you. And thank you for getting that, Tyler. The. So I know Councilmember Alan has suggested. A sequencing. The last meeting, there was a suggested sequencing. This is the one that got the majority, so. I I'm open to. Hearing where you all want to go with this again, so that would be fine. Councilmember Tyler, you had your hand up?
Yeah, so Alan, I I would offer. A space for you to reconsider because I don't think from the sounds, from the sound of the arguments that everybody in the council made. Nobody's in agreement with the the direction that. That you want to take, which I understand that argument. And I've had conversations with folks in the community that are very passionate about that, but seeing that that's not going to be the direction that we take unless. Our colleagues on the council express something different than what I understand. I'm hoping that you'd be willing to be supportive. Of the direction that I'm hoping to to take the city here in that we allow a space for. The two higher renter districts, the high, two highest renter districts to be ran in two thousand and twenty-four. So that way it allows those districts to have just that much more chance to select the candidate of their choice. I think allowing them to do it during a presidential cycle. As opposed to just basing this off of Ed and I being up and it just. Trying to, I think, create a space for us to to run or for our districts to be ran and concern around. Appointments, which I think that that could happen either way, but I'm I'm hoping that you could be supportive. Of of thinking about this from allowing those renter districts to have the opportunity during the presidential cycle.
Well, since you asked, I mean, I I really don't, I'm not persuaded by the argument that. That's going to make a huge difference. The presidential election's going to make a huge difference. I think you have larger voter turnout from everybody. In presidential elections. And but I do think, and I know that if you have an election in two thousand and twenty-two in District Four. They're going to get representation in two thousand and twenty-two in District Four as opposed to having to wait two years. As I said, I mean, I I'm open to to what the second district might be. And so I could see, I I I do see some benefit in doing District Two and just kind of not creating a situation where we have to appoint somebody. But I also do see some value in District One as being the other. District that has the largest disadvantaged folks and the largest number of renters. And again, making sure they get representation sooner than later. So I could see four, two, or four, one. Uh, I'm not sure I'm going to have any support from anybody for any of this, but that's just how I see it.
Can we have Nat go back to the slide that showed the percentage of? I think it was like the Latino vote. Uh, over the last couple of election cycles. And and Alan, while he's pulling it up, the the thing that I would share is you're right that. All groups vote more during presidential cycles, but I think what may be obvious for us to. To see when we think about this a little bit more is homeowners are going to be more likely to vote all the time, if that makes sense. Right? They're they're more likely to vote every single election cycle. They're, they're more likely to vote every single election cycle versus renters, they're less likely to participate in a midterm and they get more energized during a presidential cycle. So that delta of that jump for renters is going to be greater than it would be for homeowners who are more likely to vote all the time anyways. But even though they, they do have an uptick, that uptick is not going to be as great though, because they're probably going to be voting. So my point is, is that I think it could be significant, even if it's one percent, Alan, even if it's one percent, whatever that, that difference is, that could really help get them over the edge with, with selecting the candidate they want. Um, and so thank you, Nat, for, for pulling this up. And, you know, just this shows, um, I think the significant jump that we're seeing, it would be nice to have this in comparison to um, at, from, you know, from renters to homeowners. But, you know, I think that these, these are significant jumps that we see in more disadvantaged communities than we would expect to see in more affluent communities, that these people are probably paying more attention to what's going on, participating more. We're not having to worry about those people participating. We're having to worry about people that are working two jobs and that are trying to take care of their family and just buy. Those are the people that don't vote as much. And so the voter turnout in 2024, I think, could make a difference.
Anyone else at this point? Alan, do you want to try your motion and see if it goes anywhere or?
Sure, sure. I would um, make a motion that in, what the sequencing be thus that in twenty, what is it, twenty-twenty-two? Um, districts four and two, and in twenty-twenty-four, districts one and three.
All right. Do we have a second? It doesn't look like we have a second. And so we have uh, any alternate motions then?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, as it's on the screen, the sequencing, I would make the motion that councilmember districts one and two be aligned for twenty-twenty-two and districts three and four be aligned for twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
All right, let's discuss that one.
Um, so I'll just say again, I'm, I'm interested in um, not having to appoint. Um, the continuity makes sense. We get a higher turnout in twenty-twenty-four in a presidential election. Um, I think we had a good voter turnout in District One in the previous years. Um, I'm very confident that there will be um, viable candidates from all the districts. But in twenty-twenty-four, when District Four is up, there'll be a lot of energy there. Uh, it'll be a new district with a new opportunity for their first representative council. Um, I think that there's certainly adequate time and some would say why should they have to wait? But I am concerned with it being uh, six months. If you look at the calendar, which actually, as you know, people start voting in early October, so it's really five months. Uh, so I think in all fairness, with the chaos of, of, of trying to recover from COVID, trying to get back together and mount a campaign in a new district, I think we have an opportunity to let that district um, really settle into the course of what they choose. And twenty-twenty-four just makes sense to do that. They will always have representatives from the council, regardless of which district they're in. So they will not be abandoned. We will also represent all of the, the various committees that we all do. And it includes um, North Fremont and includes the business district and it also includes our uh, NCIP uh, in the process with that. And we also have active contacts with our neighborhood presidents. So I think twenty-twenty-four needs that time to be ready for election uh, for District Four. But that, that's why I made the motion.
All right. Got it. Further discussion? Councilmember Alan?
Yeah, just note that any one, all of these districts are new. So all of these districts are going to be faced with the same challenge of that communities of interest in those districts of finding candidates in a very short timeframe. So I don't think it really matters. I don't think that's really relevant to uh, this decision. Uh, and the other proposal also would have ensured that we would not have had um, appointments.
So I want to, I want to ask with the, to clarify that. Um, with the way this is aligned as the proposed, as the motion is, there, there would not be any necessity for an appointment.
That is, that is correct. Um, under any other scenario of these one member, if not two, uh, councilmembers would need to be appointed in December of twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
I believe that's true. I think if we had chosen four and two, I, I guess I don't understand why an appointment would be necessary.
If you, no, you're right. If, if it's not, if it's four and two,
Right.
No, you wouldn't have an appointment.
You would not.
Yeah. But I still like this alignment irrespective of that. Thank you for pointing that out, Alan. But I, I'm not changing my mind.
Yeah, I, I think the, I, I was actually going to make that very point. I, I think that the idea of, of appointments, again, we can't predict what scenario is going to play out and what happens with people deciding to run or not running in what race. So we don't have any control over deciding whether positions should be appointed or not. And, and when that moment comes, we can choose to hold an election if, if we so choose. But the point being is that we don't, we shouldn't be making a decision today based off of that. I think we should be making a decision based off of, I, I think, and I've said this a couple of times, but just to reiterate, whether we should allow the, the more disadvantaged commu- uh, districts to be ran um, or the wealthier districts. So I, I'll, I'll try to make a substitute motion here. Um, thank you, Nat. Actually, I should have looked at this before. Okay, so substitute motion that we go with districts three gosh, I'm going to ruin this. And two, two and three.
All right, for the sake of discussion, I'll second that.
Is that two and three in twenty-two? Tyler, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Can, can you put the map back up again, please? I have a short memory.
Clementine, I missed what you were, you were trying to say there.
Sorry, I think Dan clarified it for me. I just wanted to double check about the year.
Perfect, thank you. So purple and green is what I'm looking at.
Was that the, was that the first motion? That was the first motion that didn't get a second, is that correct?
No, um, the first motion was by Alan and he made a motion, I believe it was for four and two?
Correct, four and two.
Four and two this year, I mean, two thousand twenty-two.
That's correct.
So you did the reverse.
So he, he did four and two and I'm saying two and three.
I got it.
Yeah, so we, we switched sides.
It's the reverse, yeah.
Okay, so, so Tyler, if I could clarify this in your, in your thought process here, um, if you did, if this passed and we did have a twenty-twenty-two election that was District Three, um, that would be for two years. Right? And
The district seat?
I'm sorry, no, it would be, it'd be a four, a four-year position in twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
And in District Three. And in twenty-twenty-two, it'd be a four-year term for District Two. And there would also not be a need for an appointment.
That's cr- correct, but, but, but I'm, I'm, all I'm saying is that we don't know. Who knows what will happen that might create a scenario which would require an appointment? Because to me, somebody would have to decide to leave their position. Right? There had to be a, or, or somebody doesn't run in that, in that district. And so now there's no, there's nobody that's elected by people. So then we would have to appoint that. So that's what I understand. If there's a scenario that I'm not understanding, I, I'm open to hearing that. But I, e- either somebody leaves their position or nobody runs for a vacant position and gets elected to it by the people.
But Tyler, if I can help out a little bit here, I, I can understand what you're saying. You don't like to play the what-if game. What if this happens? Yeah, I get that. That, that's fair. That is, that is fair. Um, so I, but sometimes I'll leave it at that. It's fair. It's, it's fair, it's, it's fair to say that, Tyler.
Well, I think it's important for us to look at the what-ifs. I'm not saying that I don't want to look at the what-ifs, but the what-ifs can be the argument that's being made in regards to this what-if. What if we have, if we, if we go with these other options, any other option than going with one and two, which is Ed's in my district? Any other option's going to create this scenario that we would have to appoint. And that's not necessarily true. There could be scenarios where if we go with that, that option that we would end up appointing and it could happen under the other scenarios as well.
Well, it wouldn't happen under two and three. Well, how, how could it happen if two and three go? Because there would be two new council members there and then the at-large would stay where they are. I mean, I
Right.
I not quite understand where the, the appointment would come out of two and three. I mean, I understand the appointment uh, or two and three. I mean, all of these, if everybody stays where they are, of course, naturally, there won't be.
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of, out of turn here.
That's okay, go ahead, Nat.
But if, I'm just going to use one example, if either councilmembers Albert or Hoffa who live in District Three run for election in twenty-twenty-two November, and one gets, one goes into the four-year term seat, the at-large seat is vacated and then someone will have to appoint for one council member for a two-year term. So it will, it would, it would result in an appointment. And that's what we were trying to explain earlier is that if, if that's the case. Now, if that's not the case, both councilmembers Albert and Hoffa could continue their term and you would have essentially a third. Albert and, and Hoffa would represent the city at-large while living in Monterey Vista. And then there would be a new council member in District Three.
I just want to make sure everybody on the council knows that this is a, a very uncomfortable conversation. It really is.
Yeah, and, and I think that this plays to, you know, part of my reasoning for supporting the original motion. This, we're working on a substitute motion. If you just dialed in to see what we're doing. So we have two motions on the floor, but my original motion was to not bring an unsettled circumstances for our representative government to our communities. And I think doing um, you know, doing it any other alternative does that. And I think uh, to go back to the principle of what, what drives it to make it a decision for me is that we have two councilmembers in the district um, that were elected to four-year terms. And it seems like we are depriving the community of the promise that the council members when elected made to their community when they were elected to a four-year term. We're basically cutting that in half. And that, to me, doesn't make sense.
It's Councilmember Alan, please.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, um, the substitute motion by including District Three creates one of two scenarios. Scenario one, um, the two councilmembers from District Three that are already on council don't run, retain their seats. Somebody new is elected. And so actually you would now have three councilmembers from that district, which just to remind you is kind of why, what this is all about, like what we're trying to change. So that doesn't seem like a very good outcome. Or alternatively, one or two of the current councilmembers run for that seat and you up, end up having to appoint one or two at-large seats. Neither of those scenarios seem to me to be ideal. So from my point of view, it just doesn't make sense. It, it, it does add a degree of complexity and confusion and um, and ultimately goes against, I think, what we're trying to achieve. Um, so for that reason, and also, as I said before, I really think District Four should be included in twenty-twenty-two. I think that's what, uh, I think that's what the people there want.
So if I, if I could, um, Alan, I think that this, and we knew this from the get-go, that this however we do this, however we do it, and, and Dan, you just kind of identified it to the feeling of discomfort. However, we move forward with this is going to be messy. This transition to districts is going to be messy. And so I think trying to water it down on one side, um, I don't think it really makes that much of a difference. Um, particularly because regardless of there being potentially two or three uh, councilmembers in District Three, right? I, I'm, I'm assuming that let's say hypothetically, you and Dan decide not to run for District Three, if that's what we go with. Well, you and Dan, I'm assuming would still be representing the entire city in your at-large seat, right? So we still have that situation set up where you still represent the districts that don't have a, a specific representative yet.
So I'm, I'm going to ask um, Chrissy a question. Now, I've seen it done once, um, but I'm not quite sure if, if this is an answer. Can I make another substitute motion? A third? Or do we have to vote on the second one?
Ooh.
Yeah, I think we're supposed to vote on the second one.
We're supposed to vote on the second.
Okay. Just wanted, I wanted to check with our city attorney before I said it.
I could pull up my rules real quick.
I think there could be more than two motions on the
On the table.
On the floor, on the table. I think probably we have to vote on the substitute, then we have to vote on the primary. If both of those fail, somebody could make a new motion.
Then we, then we were wrong on my last board.
Let me, let me simplify life. I, I'm, I'm hearing, I don't hear three people. Again, I'm not going to count noses. Uh, let me withdraw my second. Let's see if somebody else wants to second Tyler's motion. That will give us an idea how, where we're going. Otherwise, we could just with, uh, withdraw it from the table. So I'll withdraw my second. And again, uh, the motion was to sequence districts two and three in twenty-twenty-two, one and four in twenty-twenty-four. So that's correct motion, Tyler, I believe. And so is there a second? All right, so the motion is with um, no longer valid. And if you want to withdraw it, Tyler, or it just? Yeah, Tyler was, will withdraw that.
I have a choice.
Not to withdraw the motion, but I think it was very important to do that and have this uh, deeper discussion, honestly. So we're back to the original motion, which is staff recommendation, which is districts uh, one and two in this upcoming election.
I'm going to make a substitute motion.
Oh, yeah.
So um, wh- how about, how about four and two in twenty-two? And uh, one and three in twenty-four?
I will second that motion.
Well, that was Alan's motion that originally, right? That didn't get a second.
Yeah, that's the motion he made that he did not get a second for.
It was?
Yeah.
Yes.
How, how long ago was that? Was that an hour ago?
A long time ago.
In real time or?
Forget it.
Hey Daddy.
I'm just trying, folks, I'm just trying to move this along, basically.
Hey Dad, do you want to know in real time or city council time?
Wow. I, I removed my motion.
Okay, he's removed it, all right. I think that gets us back to the original motion and uh, Nat, put it on the screen again, please. All right. So that's the motion. And basically you would look at District One is uh, New Monterey and part of Old Town. And District Two is part of Monterey Vista, then it takes in downtown, part of of Old Town. And then it wraps up into the hillsides towards Monsalas, Deer Flats, Fish Flats, et cetera. So that was sort of the districts.
I think just to clarify, Mayor. Yeah. I, I mean, unless I miss something, I think they're saying four, districts four and two. So that would be C and D on the older version of the map. So that would be everything lower parts of Old Town, downtown, Altamisa, NPS.
That's number two, right? And number one is?
I don't think they're saying number one. I think they said number four and number two.
Wait, wait, who's, who's there?
No, I hadn't heard that.
I thought, I thought Dan- I thought I thought Dan just made the motion for.
No, I pulled it. You pulled the motion.
We're we're back to the original motion.
Tyler, Tyler, you you were laughing too much, Tyler.
I have a headache. Yeah.
So Tyler, Mayor.
The original motion and staff, what is the substitute motion that's that you?
There was no substitute motion. I pulled my substitute motion because. Because.
To the original motion.
Alan's Alan made my motion, which no one seconded. I didn't realize that. I was just trying to move things along, to be honest with you.
So you you have arrived again at the original motion motion uh sequencing council members District One and Two in twenty twenty-two? And District Three and Four? And that was the beginning point. And then we we started entertaining a substitute motion. So right now, you're back to tonight's recommendation base.
Thank you, Matt.
On your recommendation.
We've got it. Unless there's any more clarification, I think uh? Elvis has left the building, the the train has left the station. The horse is out of the barn and? There's one more. I'll have to look it up. Wait a minute.
We're keeping from the sky falling.
That ship has sailed. All right, so we have, everybody understands the motion. It's in front of us, the sequencing? Districts one and two? And twenty twenty-two, then three and four in twenty twenty-four. So roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
No.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
No.
And Mayor Robertson.
Yes. All right, we made it. With everybody's uh, let's let's take a Monterey Five and reconvene at about nine o'clock, okay? Does that sound good? All right, we'll see you all shortly.
And, all right, everybody, we're back. And let's go ahead and continue with our meeting this evening. So we've had our public hearing. And let me see, we have.
Public comments.
Yeah, oh, there's the consent. It's I got it. Okay, I was looking for consent and I can continue public comments if you didn't. Speak to this afternoon during open mic and you would like to speak right now for a maximum of three minutes on a subject subject within the jurisdiction of Monterey. Not on the agenda. We welcome your comments. So we'll turn it over to Clementine to see if we have one anyone who'd like to share this evening.
Yes, I will call on someone on the phone with the last three digits seven zero five. On mute. And go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Robertson and City Council members. I am so pleased to hear you talk about vegan alternatives. That's a huge step for all of us.
Yes.
So we had a flare in Big Sur that spread from a burn pile. If brush and grass had been eaten down by herbivores and wild horses and burrows, the risk and fire danger would have been greatly reduced. Politicians need to recognize the true role wild horses and burrows can play in climate change and mega fires. In Congress, Jimmy Panetta's Save Our Forest Act allocates forty nine million dollars. Is supposed to go towards having more personnel to oversee fires. The act states campfires are the main cause of fires. But brush and grasses are equal. Our national forests are being managed in lunacy. They spray the grasses and brush with toxic herbicides, poisoning everything and the the grasses die and become even a greater fire hazard. There is a fixed mindset that horses are domestic animals and therefore cannot possibly fulfill their true role, which is to consume grasses and brush. Instead, we want to tear up the forest floors with mechanical earth movers and toxic trees instead of utilizing natural means. Let's free our wild horses to do the job nature intended. Fifty thousand wild horses in holding could crop down one point nine million pounds of grass and brush a day. Contrary to cowboy science, horses evolved in North America and their bones were found in Carlsbad, California, dating back fifty thousand years ago. They are one of the greatest survivalists on the planet. They actually can smell water underground and dig up springs for other animals. They can survive in the coldest winters pawing for grasses four feet or more. And not only that, they can control their own population according to food available. All this BLM denies. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
And Mr. Mayor, I do not see any more hands raised.
All right, thank you. Well, then we'll close the public comments and back to the agenda. Here we go. As I said earlier, we did not have a closed session, so there are no announcements. We have consent. Any questions? Any council want to pull anything or did the public any of the public want to pull anything that we know of? Yeah?
No, Mr. Mayor, we're not aware that the public wants to pull anything.
Okay, council members, questions? Pull anything? Make a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson.
Yes, for me as well. All right, council comments?
I'll go, Mayor.
Okay, councilmember Dan?
Two comments. Um, as you folks already know, I sit on the Monterey Regional Waste Management District and we have a project that is in partnership with Monterey Water One. And the project creates a micro grid between the two facilities. What it does is it takes the landfill gas from the Monterey Regional Waste Management landfill and produces renewable energy at a low cost and then supplies that energy to run portions of the pure water Monterey system. The project is the responsibility of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District in partnership with Monterey One. And it's a four million dollar project which will be completed this year. So I think that's a great example of two agencies working together to create a sustainable environment in our community. So I just wanted to report on that because we just approved the contract. Then the second comment I wanted to make is on SB thirteen eighty-three, and that's the state law requiring the separations of organic waste. The reason I bring that up, well, just so the public understands and remember that food waste starting January first now should be mixed in with the garden waste in your green bins. And the reason I bring that up is I had a couple of phone calls from residents that are confused about the collection of organic waste separation. The two that talked to me both own apartment complexes and what they were concerned about is they didn't know whose responsibility it was to to collect it or to implement the program or mandate the program. So I had the chance to talk to Ted, our city's city's sustainable coordinator, and he really helped me out explaining the procedure to the residents and and it came out to where the the responsibility of the the property owners is that they get the green recycled bins and then the tenant's responsibility is to take the organic material from their kitchens and put it into the green bins. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that this procedure is really important, but it's only we're only encouraging people to do this and then in two thousand twenty-four it'll be required. But mostly I wanted to thank Ted for setting me straight so that I can explain to other people in our community how that system works. So that's it, Mayor, those two.
Good. Well, thank you for the update and thanks for for sitting on that board and making those good environmental decisions. We appreciate that. All right, anyone else? Council comments? Councilmember Allen, anything tonight? Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, a couple of things. So to follow up with Dan's comments, Ted Trossus will appreciate knowing that my wife and I, well, my wife, Watt, and we are using a countertop organic machine that seems to work very well. And so, you know, it's, I think the prices will come down in the next couple of years. So we've had a couple of weeks where we put just very few little items like bones in the yardways. So it's been a pretty easy transition for us. So I just wanted to acknowledge Mary Adams is the new Transportation Authority Monterey County Chair and so I've relinquished that and happily get a little bit more time in my life from that. So Mary is now your chair and I'll continue to serve on the board as the past chair and also on the executive committee as well. Also, as you all know, the AT&T is upon us and I'll be out there starting tomorrow and through Saturday in my twenty-second year volunteering. So looking forward to connecting to lots of old friends and getting lots of sunshine. So great time to come out. Ticket sales are way up and way above what I expected. So it should be a wonderful tournament year. Compliments to the staff. The last probably six weeks, I'd say I've had a number of things through the city manager where I, in our time together, I've requested some information, requested data clarification. And as always, Mr. Hans Ousler has been professional, tremendously supportive and very helpful. And the staff has been very prompt. So I just wanted to just generally say in all the the conversations that have happened in the last six years, I mean, six months, it's been phenomenal. The last six weeks, there's been an uptick in requests from the community. So very responsive staff and we're truly served. And thank you for all the departments that do that so well. Just to highlight, not to go into a lot of details about tonight, but just this process of the mapping and what the community has been observing work. In large measure, I'm I'm kind of, you know, satisfied that we look back and say together, this journey has been very fast and prompt and at times not necessarily what we chose, but we're nearly through it. You know, it's kind of like taking the SAT clock and you have to do math and it all counts. And so congratulations to my fellow council members and mayor who have hung in there and we've had some great debates and great conversations about, you know, what's in our heart and why we care and and more about our community. So there may be some subtle differences and some disagreements over the nuances, but I think overall this community should look at the the fact that we have a lot of commonality, irrespective of the district that we are in. This is Monterey and I want to give credit to Dan's father, Mayor Dan Albert Senior, who coined the phrase the Monterey Way. And the connection I see there is the staff serves us so well. They do it in the Monterey way and the community recognizes that this is a model city that gets things right and we get through it together and we voice our opinions, but we do it, do so professionally, respectfully. And we have a fantastic community because of it. So that's that's all the comments I have and congratulations on getting through this last five weeks of the process and congratulations staff for, I know it's been heavy lifting for all of you getting through the mapping and the public hearings, but we're almost there and thank you staff for doing that for us.
Good. Thank you, Ed, and thanks for your service as chairperson of TMC. That was a big load and I'm glad you're still on the executive committee.
Yeah, we want to get those roads fixed. We've still got more to go.
There you go. Councilmember Tyler, anything to share with us this evening, please?
Yeah, so from a Monterey One Water perspective, the the hot topic at our last board meeting, which also came up during the Recycled Water Committee meeting that I sit on. We had on the on the Recycled Water Committee, we had made a recommendation to the board that we not move forward with a request that we had received from CalAM until they had agreed to work in partnership on getting the water purchase agreement signed. So giving a little bit of history without going into too much detail. We had negotiated the water purchase agreement for the expansion of Pure Water Monterey in the fall of last year. And the board unanimously approved that to move forward. Because it's going to be operated, the the water is going to be managed by CalAM. They're going to be purchasing that, right? So because they're purchasing that and they're involved in this process, they have to go to the CPUC to get approval. And in CalAM's application to the CPUC, they undermined it. They they basically undermined the project, the expansion in their request to move forward with the expansion. And so it's caused a little bit of hang up in getting the CPUC approval. And so basically the board voted unanimously last night in their request to us to do a joint project where one of our CIP projects is the structure that holds the outfall. So all the rest of the crud that goes out into the ocean, that needs to be replaced in the next, I think it's like something along the lines of five to six, seven years, something like that. And so CalAM, they have to, one of their requirements with with the Coastal Commission is they have to line the outfall so that the what what comes out is it doesn't deteriorate the the structure. And they were hoping to tie the two together in an effort to get their project done now as opposed to waiting until the expansion is complete. So we we've asked them to hold off until we can come to an agreement on the expansion. So I just kind of wanted to give it an update because that was the the big hot topic. And if I could for one second, screen share and it's a follow up to what Dan had just shared in regards to this joint project between the two agencies. This is a good image of what was shared. Felipe, your new director, Dan, came to our Monterey One Water Board meeting last night. And this was one of the handouts that they provided us. And so this is a little bit of a description of what that joint project looks like with increased supply of landfill gas and an increase in supply from from both Monterey One and the Regional Waste Management District for organics to energy. And there's other elements in regards to their portfolio as well that they are looking at either adding or 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 it being just completely new source. So I just wanted to show this real quick because I'm I'm super excited about this opportunity. These are the types of things that we need to continue to do from a regional perspective so that we can not only combat climate change, but make sure that the environments and and our residents live in a healthy environment. So that is it from my side.
Good. And and thank you for service on that board. And I'm happy to hear that decisions are being made unanimously these days. That's excellent. And so my counts, my count comment really segues into what you're talking about. I am the in the Water Management District. I'm the mayor's representative. Selected by the six mayors who whose cities are within the Water Management District boundaries, which are more or less the same as CalAM's. And the Water District has supported and helped fund Pure Water Monterey expansion, which expects to meet growth projections for the next two decades. You know, we have a CDO from the State Water Resources Control Board, a cease and desist order. And part of there are two, two elements of that. One is condition two in that there are no, CalAM is not allowed to give any additional meters, water meters, and this is why we're really at it. It's stagnant. Not stagnant water, but we're stagnant with respect to our affordable housing, especially on Garden Road. But the second part of the CDO was a reduction each year of the amount of water that can be taken from the Carmel River. And at this point, that final penalty, if you want to call it that, has been enacted. And so the only water taken out from Carmel River right now is the legal water and it's about thirty seven hundred acre feet. The rest is being made up by Pure Water Monterey Monterey One District, which is taking the wastewater and using it, cleaning it, putting in the seaside basin and ultimately is mixed and ends up in our faucets. And Monterey One Water has tied our noses well on schedule in producing its protection thirty five hundred acre feet and the additional addition expansion would be another twenty two hundred acre feet. Also, the district, and this is not closed session items, but the district is exploring legal and other options as a result of the LAFCO board decision denying the district's request for latent powers. And that decision overturned their staff recommendation. And so the district has engaged a legal firm to explore options and costs with respect to the LAFCO decision. Also, districting, but this is called District Advisory Committee. There were nine very qualified people were appointed to the districting advisory committee and they will be coming back to the board with recommendations. The county just did this with very minor changes to the five supervisory districts. I'm expecting that the five at-large districts will probably not have a whole lot of change because the population really hasn't shifted that much. But that's an update on our last Water Management District meeting. Back to our city manager for city manager reports, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two things that I want to announce or just make us aware of today is the start of Black History Month again. February is the traditional month for that. This year's theme is is called Black Health and Wellness. And it's just interesting and reminds us that we are in the third year of COVID nineteen. And we have seen how disproportionately minorities have been affected also by by the current pandemic. So Black History Month has started February first, goes to March first, and the theme is Black Health and Wellness. And the second announcement is along the same lines and is Gone Haigh For Choi. Today is the start of Chinese New Year. And that's my version of Chinese to say Happy New Year, Gone Haigh For Choi. And we are in the year of the tiger and as we all know, we have quite a number of Chinese Americans living on the Monterey Peninsula. And for them, that is also start of a seasonal celebration of their traditions and their culture. That's all for today.
All right. Thank you so much. I want to, as we close, I want to reiterate what councilmember Ed said so so nicely. Appreciation for the staff, for our city council. Most of our votes are five oh, but when they're not, everyone explains where they're coming from, very cogent, very articulate, and we take our vote and we move on for the betterment of Monterey. So I am very grateful for our public, our staff and my colleagues on the city council. So with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you all.